I just say that those parties, they should change.
Why?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, definitely have to make.
It's a decision of mine.
Oh, you were right.
When you're holding on. And you're off because you're ready. I think they're paranoid. If we're wanting to do that, maybe they're probably.
There actually is a site plan. So we kind of require the. I mean, it's made of.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good and good.
So there was a call.
Exactly. I know.
I can stop first.
No. You're right.
That's funny.
And then a lot of people want the signs. You want the signs.
Try to read them sometimes.
All right, you can start again. Do you choose the content on the on there?
So that they don't do it, or you do what gets approved. Something you can enforce.
And they put a word. I'd like to call the village of Butler's Board meeting, December 21st, 2021, to order. And, um, if you would leave this way in the public.
I'm pleased to be the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose law the Lord has been.
And justice is served.
Good evening. And first, either one of the meeting tonight is a public comment. If anybody would like to address the board, come to the microphone and do so. Say your name, please.
I take the mask off here.
We have to keep an eye on the time, sir.
Okay. So I'd ask.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Winters. The address is 20 Dunning Avenue in the middle of Webster. I was here last week. I don't expect to do this to you again in the future. You know how you go to the refrigerator and you open the door and then you wonder why you're standing there? That's why I have this. I'm 80 years old and the memories are the greatest thing. First of all, I want to compliment the board for their conservative approach to the subject of marijuana sales in Webster. The board, as it knows, can always opt in at a future date should they decide the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. If it comes time for another vote, I still may be opposed, but I won't presume to tell the board what they should do. I just want to be comfortable that you are making a well-informed decision. Mr. Mayor, I recently sent you a copy of a statement from the American Medical Association. Did you share that with the other board members?
I don't know. I didn't.
Okay. Would you?
Sure.
I mean, I have objection to that. Yeah, okay. This was a statement, a recent position statement, I think was dated in April this year, 2021, of the American Medical Association's position on legalization and sale of recreational marijuana. By the way, did any of you see the article in the Monde's DNC about problems that California's having with their tax dollars? Other words, they're not, they're not, they're not making. So you know what that means is the towns are going to make even less money because the state's not going to give up their share. They're going to ask you to give up. They're not going to raise the taxes, I don't think. They can't sell it now because it's cheaper than the illegal. Next, I want to thank the town of Penfield for being the sacrificial lamb in this experiment. It is an experiment because at this point we have limited knowledge of the outcomes other than perhaps some additional revenue, which the board suggested last week was probably not enough to be a deciding factor. So let's wait and see how things go in the communities that have opted in. In the meantime, they'll get all the traffic and perhaps the any related problems. There is a cannabis control board in Albany who will draw the accompanying rules and regulations. I understand board appointments have not been completed as yet, so we really don't know the regulations involving the possession thereof, management guidelines as related to operation of a motor vehicle, how to determine impairment, regulations for the dispensaries, et cetera. If we believe the state government was thinking about the well-being of the local communities throughout the state when they passed this law, I would suggest we're being naive. This was a tax revenue-driven decision, as have been the casino and gambling laws previously passed. A brief political statement. This is what happens when we have one political party in complete control of all three branches of the government, as is the case in our state. This time it's Democrats in control, but I also believe that total Republican control could have equally questionable ramifications for cities. It's best to have bipartisan decisions, which this one was not. At the last meeting of the board, one or two members suggested the support of the law, for support of the law, because it might prevent marijuana users from getting some marijuana laced with something like fentanyl. And I think that's a valid concern. However, I will point out that this law only allows the sale to those aged 21 and over. This means our most vulnerable groups, middle and high school age students, will still have to buy their weed illegally, as they do now. I'm more worried about that group than I am those over 21, because hopefully by then they will essentially be adults and capable of making wiser decisions. And by the way, I express that optimism with tongue in cheek. If the older folks want to continue to buy weed illegally, which some will do, they will own the problem. So this law does essentially nothing to protect our young users. Just to confirm my statement, I asked my two granddaughters recently if weed use was limited to high school students. And they said no, they laughed, actually. They say middle students use it as well, although not to the same extent. I obviously am philosophically opposed to making a substance that is subject to abuse any more readily available than it already is. It is still an illegal substance under federal law, although that may change in the future. I'll end my presentation on a lighter note with regards to the motor vehicle thing. You know, there is a way to tell a person who's been driving under the influence of alcohol versus the person who's been driving under the influence of marijuana. The person who's driving under the influence of alcohol will be driving down the road, weaving back and forth over the center line and everything. The person who's high on marijuana will be driving in a perfectly straight line, but they'll be 15 feet to the right on the sidewalk. Just kidding. Wind down.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay. Yes.
I'm Lori Reynolds, 138 Judson Street. And on behalf of the Webster Citizen National League, I give Christmas cards for all the board. We'd like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. A much better 2022, we hope, for everyone.
You as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Good. Thank you.
Even Don.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
How come Darryl got two?
Thank you. That is good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the board this evening? Thank you for the card. And at this time, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We'll move to the regular release of the architectural agenda. First of all, we have a resolution to approve the minutes. I believe that the minutes, if we can table that until the next meeting, is that correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
I just, I'm missing one thing from a public speaker, so I just wanted to put that off until next meeting. That's okay.
We'll table that. Approval of those minutes until our next meeting, our first meeting in the chamber. Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants.
I did those. It's kind of light. And I did not have any. Quiet is good.
Do you have a motion to approve them?
I'll make that.
For a second.
Trusty Alito?
Aye.
Trusty Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Don, we need to change the letter of this and approve, or should we do that afterwards?
What?
Short form assessment. I don't believe that it's on here, so.
No, no.
Do this resolution first and then move to that.
No. I do the presentation first, you know, go through everything and then, and then you can take it, you can take care of seeker right before you decide what you're going to do about approving or disapproving the site plan. But I, you know, in case people have questions, you need to hear what quite a whole proposal is. We'll step right up, too. That's nice.
If I could talk around, it'd be a wonderful thing. Been talking too much today, I think. Cal and Rue, McMahon and Rue Associates, we're here on that behalf of the owners. For that, the owners are here in the audience also, if you can answer any questions you might have concerning the building. The warehouse is a little, 1,000, not quite 12,000 square feet, a little over 12,000 square feet. It has a access that's approved for tractor trailers driving in, a raised loading dock to unload. We have a total of 24 parking spaces. We're showing 16 to be built and 18, 16 to be built, oh, wait a minute, 18 to be built, one or the other, 16 to be built and 8 to be land banked up front. We have stormwater, a report that we delivered to Aaron tonight. We have stormwater plans to mitigate the stormwater that's shown on the new plans. We have, we've given you some architecturals, such as they are. There's a dimension problem on the architecturals, the size of the buildings a little bit. The architect didn't, didn't have the answer, the right number in there, so. There's landscaping, we've shown landscaping on our plan. There's a handicap parking space out front. There's new doors placed on the architecturals for access. Of course, we've got sanitary sewer, new water and all the other things. We think it's a good plan and if there's any questions we wanted by the answer. I would ask if you clarified the, please, the picture that shows from a front view looking back at the 30 by 30 building. If you would clarify, please, the loading dock or the loading door that they're for the. Sure, certainly. The loading dock is raised above the ground. We don't have a sunken area for the, for the tractor trailers to back into for the simple reason, you just don't have enough range. So that's going to be a raised platform and it's going to be a main overhead door with the inside of it, I don't know what they call it, there's an adjustment for the various tractor trailers, the floor raises up and down to match it. So we drive straight, you know, come straight in. There's a man door on the west side. There will be stairs down for that four feet, steps down. And then adjacent to that, there's another entry door that goes into the lower area that's going to be the warehouse. The architectural's all shot correctly? We'll, we'll fix that.
So the required parking is 24 spaces. And if I count correctly, you've got 22, including the ones that are being land banked. You're short two spaces.
Did I, did I miscount? Because that's what I was just struggling with myself.
I counted them like three times and I come up with a total of 22.
We don't make it 24.
But you can only land bank six of them. So you gotta add, you gotta add two somewhere.
One out front and one in the back. We've got plenty of room.
Okay.
Is it, is it still 24? Because the original, I know at zoning board meeting, it was 24, but the size of the building is wrong. It's less than that square footage, so we'll have to double check on those, the other spaces. Because before it was 12,000, it was over 12,000, now it's less than 12,000.
It's less than 12,000.
We'll have to double check that.
So whatever that was up to, and I thought we had it right, but maybe.
Get the, can I get a copy? I don't think it's going to be related to coaching. Oh. While we're looking at this.
Yeah, I was just wondering what was the color going to be on the buildings? Oh, my.
Roof is going to be black. The fisher didn't show that. Roof is black.
Yeah.
Body is purple gray, the doors are white, and the trim wall being black all around around the doors and windows.
Thanks. What's the square footage?
11,940, I believe.
Probably not.
What is it? I believe it's 11,940. It's.
Okay, still get it to 24. You gotta be 11,500 or less to eliminate this space. It's one for each 500 square feet.
Okay, yeah. So it'll still be.
So we'll, we'll correct that.
And you mentioned on the landscaping, the plan shows one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, like eight. It's so small, I can't read what it says here. It's some kind of Latin, oh, hydrangea, camembert wood, and a false cypress. Is that like there's a true cypress versus a false cypress? You guys are the agricultural.
Well, they'll just pick out some plants to put there to go.
Is there going to be?
Landscape properly.
Well, is there going to be anything anywhere else besides in the front of the building? At one point, I saw a sketch that was submitted that showed a berm to the, to the, to the west. And on the top of the berm, it looked like there was going to be evergreens or something. Are you still planting this berm?
We're not.
Okay.
That's between my house and the building.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he wouldn't need a, honestly, he needs a berm for privacy or anything from his house to the building.
I'm sure what they do for.
Well, I don't say they need it. I'm just saying, but originally, they, they submitted a sketch that showed a berm with very tough animal. So I don't know, this is the first I've heard he's no longer going to do it.
Berm is a.
But it's up, it's up to the board if you think, you know.
Berm's a lot of times a peat range, so it's difficult.
No, I'm not saying about the berm. I'm talking about the landscaping. If you think just the shrubs they're going to put in on the front is sufficient, then that's up to you.
Well, Bill's got to look at it, right? Bill has to look at it. He's asked.
With, with what they do for a living, I'm sure this is going to look nice.
Yeah, I'm personally not concerned if a landscape. Well, all right. I'm just at the point that. Typically, it's the frontage. If the frontage is taken care of, I mean. Okay. I know this board isn't used to doing site plan reviews, but if it doesn't show up on the site plan and then it gets constructed, you don't like the way it looks, you have no way to enforce anything. Okay? So if you want something, it's got to be on the approved site plan. And I'm not saying you need it or don't need it. I'm just saying if, you know, if you're totally going to rely on the owner to just landscape it as he pleases, that's fine, but then if you don't like the way it turns out, it's tough noogies to the village because you didn't, it's not on the plan, he doesn't have to do it. Yep, I'm still standing by. Landscaping on the front of the building. That's fine. And, and, and there's not going to be a door that leads out to, on the Orchard Street side of the building?
There is a door.
There is.
We have four doors. Two doors, one door to the north, one door to the south, two doors to the west. And we did that on recommendation of Aaron's required. And the latest plan is showing. Aaron, I think you've got those.
Yes, sir.
For yourself. Were we distributing?
We're going to have, we're going to have book calls out there for our wholesale business. Because that's just, that'll be just a pickup spot for other floors to pick up other materials as a loading back area. We have flowers for other floors also.
The main purpose of the building is we're receiving. Our supplier from Miami is pretty much cutting us off doing on the loading dock. So now we're putting a loading dock in, so we're pretty much receiving over there. There might be one or two people there during the day, but mostly it's going to be tractor pull in, they unload themselves, and then we'll go over in the morning and pull the stuff back where the shop was. There wasn't enough, enough real estate on Gilbert property to put a loading dock, so we went across the street.
We also looked at the property between the Sonic Temple and the mother's house. That was too narrow. There was too many utilities in there, the storm sewers and the villagers and other things, so it wasn't going to work. The company will not back in off the street. They want to be able to pull in and ready it is, and back up the loading dock and pull out. They won't back in off the street.
It's better anyways, you get a fire truck to come in there and turn around and.
So the other place is working and working, so that's why we decided to put in this property. Logistics are going to be a little bit difficult for us because we have to, you know, bring the stuff back and, you know, but that, we'll have to live with that.
They're not getting flowers at all, so.
Exactly. Especially not.
I agree.
Yes.
Do you intend to have any kind of sign?
I don't, I don't believe we need a sign. I'll put an address on there, but that would be it.
If you do decide you need a sign, you know, there's a separate permitting process for that.
Okay. Okay. We'll cross that bridge if we have to, but I don't, I don't foresee a sign right now. These wall packs were security lighting and that sort of thing. So much directly across.
The Sonic Temple.
Yeah.
The Sonic Temple?
Yeah.
And I did receive a phone call from them inquiring about, you know, the sign that was put up. And they had no objections. They said it's designed appropriately and they know, knowing the owner, they know that it'll be taken care of, well taken care of.
Of course, the fact that, my concern was that if it was residential, you'd have trucks in the night time and they'll keep their lights on most likely. So you'd have lights shining across the street, but I doubt if there's anybody there, two or three. Well, that was true, be the closest housing, but I don't foresee a problem. There's, there's a wood line all along there behind Sonic Temple.
Your house really is the only residential property in the neighborhood.
Well, my house and my mother's house. I'm just kidding. And we have our great name, Xerox, so.
I think the next closest, I think is your son's behind, but that won't be affected, you know?
That's not going to affect his son's.
Nope.
And it's, we get, it's three, three times a week, so it's not like there'll be tractor-trailer pulling there every 10 minutes. It's, it's a big expense for us. We really didn't want to do it, but we have to do it, so it's, it is what it is.
Sorry.
I get into the colors of the building. The roof is black and the body is a charcoal gray, doors are white with black trim around the, all the doors and windows.
Julia, Julia has a lot of funky colors, so she would say that's.
Yeah, well, I know, and yeah. It'll be greary that will brighten it up.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
The 14 by 16, those two doors on the side, will the trucks be able to pull in, or will they just?
Tractor-trailer trucks?
No, 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 no. The, the ones that will take what you have inside from the tractor-trailer trucks.
Our vans.
Take those out to your wholesalers or whoever.
Right. Well, the vans we have now don't fit in a regular door. They're higher vans, those dock vans, so they need taller doors.
But those are not designed for them to pull in. I guess it's designed to pull up to.
And bag with door, whatever, we'll load that. We'll have a fork truck in the building and pallet jacks.
And we're also planning on, you know, storing all our event stuff over there for our wedding products and all that, you know, our hard goods, arches and all that stuff. But we just don't have the room where we are now.
Well, you just keep on expanding and expanding. I think that's a good thing.
This is our last expansion.
Well, you think you can buy two 14 and set there.
Yeah.
Oh, there, really?
I wouldn't say last expansion, but.
For me. You can try right there. I'm sorry you have to go through all the building, but. The way things are these days, huh? I'm sorry. With their way, it's the way things are these days. I'm sorry you have to go through with having to build something, but maybe your idea was better at this point.
Well, it's just, it's unavoidable and there's nothing we can do, so we have to comply with the trucking companies.
You don't have any comments on the?
Okay. So if you have other comments, you need to now turn to seeker. And it's an unlisted action, so that means you got to go through the short environmental assessment form that the applicant.
Typically, it's the frontage, if the frontage is taken care of, I mean-
Okay, I know this board isn't used to doing site plan reviews, but if it doesn't show up on the site plan, and then it gets constructed, you don't like the way it looks, you have no way to enforce anything.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you want something, it's gotta be on the approved site plan.
Yep.
And I'm not saying you need it or don't need it, I'm just saying if, you know, if you're totally gonna rely on the owner to just landscape it as he pleases, that's fine, but then if you don't like the way it turns out, it's tough noogies to the village, because you didn't- It's not on the plan, he doesn't have to do it.
Yep, I'm still standing by landscaping the front of the building.
And, and, and there's not gonna be a door that leads out to-
On the Orchard Street side of the building?
There is a door there.
There is one.
Okay.
We have four doors. Two doors, one door to the north, one door to the south, two doors to the west. And we did that on recommendation of Aaron's required code.
And the latest plans show that. Aaron, I think you've got those.
Yes, sir.
We'll be distributing some here, Bill?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have book calls out there for our wholesale business. Because that's just, that'll be just a pickup, stuff for other floors to pick up other materials as a loading dock area. We'll be hauling flowers for other floors also.
The main purpose of the building is we're receiving. Our supplier from Miami is pretty much cutting us off, we don't have a loading dock, so now we're putting a loading dock in, so we're pretty much receiving over there. There might be one or two people there during the day, but mostly it's gonna be tractor pull in, they unload themselves, and then we'll go over in the morning and pull the stuff back where the shop was. There wasn't enough, enough real estate on Gilbert property to put a loading dock, so we don't wanna cross the street.
We also looked at the property between the Sonic Temple and my mother's house, that was too narrow, there was too many utilities in there, the storm sewers and the villagers and other things, so it wasn't gonna work. The company will not back in off the street. They wanna be able to pull in and ready it is, and back up the loading dock and pull out. They, they won't back in off the street.
It's better anyways, you get a fire truck to come in there and turn around and-
So the other place is working and working, so that's why we decided to put in this property. Logistics are gonna be a little bit difficult for us, because we have to, you know, bring the stuff back and, you know, but that, we'll have to live with that.
But they're not getting flowers at all, so-
Exactly, especially now.
I agree.
Yes.
Do you intend to have any kind of sign?
Um, I don't, I don't believe we need a sign, I'll probably put an address on there, but that would be it.
If you do decide you need a sign, you know, there's a separate permitting process for that.
Okay. Okay. We'll cross that bridge if we have to, but I don't, I don't foresee a sign right now.
These wall packs were security lighting and that sort of thing, so, much directly across-
The Sonic Temple's down at Temple.
Yeah.
The Sonic Temple?
Yeah.
And I did receive a phone call from them inquiring about, you know, the sign that was put up, and they had no objections. They said it's designed appropriately, and they know, knowing the owner, they know that it'll be taken care of, well taken care of.
What's the fact that, my concern was that if it was residential, you'd have trucks in the night time, and they'll keep their lights on most likely. So you'd have lights shining across the street, but I doubt if there's anybody there, two or three of them.
Well, that was true, it'd be the closest housing, but I don't foresee a problem, there's, there's wood line all along there behind Sonic Temple.
Your house really is the only residential property in the neighborhood.
Well, my house and my mother's house, just kids' homes, yeah. And we have our great name Xerox, so.
I think the next closest, I think there's your son's behind, but that won't be affected, you know?
That's not gonna affect his son's, no.
Nope.
And it's, we get shipped three, three times a week, so it's not like there'll be tractor trailer pulling there every ten minutes, it's- It's a big expense for us, we really didn't wanna do it, but we have to do it, so. It is what it is.
I did judge the colors of the building, the roof is black, and the body is of charcoal gray, doors are white with black trim around the whole doors and windows.
Julia, Julia has a lot of funky colors, so she would say that's-
Yeah, well, I know, and, yeah. It'll be greary that will brighten it up.
Yeah, it's right.
The fourteen by sixteen, those two doors on the side, will the trucks be able to pull in, or will they just-
Tractor trailer trucks?
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
The, the ones that will take what you have inside from the tractor trailer trucks-
Our vans.
Take those out to your wholesalers or whoever you supply.
Right, well, the vans we have now don't fit in a regular door, they're higher vans, those dock vans, so they need taller doors.
But those are not designed for them to pull in, I guess it's just designed to pull up to-
And bag with door, whatever, we'll load them, we'll have a fork truck in the building and pallet jacks. And we're also planning on, you know, storing all our event stuff over there for our wedding products and all that, you know, our hard goods, arches and all that stuff. But we just don't have the room where we are now.
Well, you just keep on expanding and expanding. I think that's a good thing.
This is our last expansion.
Well, you think you can buy two fourteen, it's not bad.
Yeah.
Oh, there, really?
I wouldn't say last expansion, but-
For me.
You can try right there.
Sorry, you have to go through all the building. The way things are these days, huh? I'm sorry, with their way, it's the way things are these days, I'm sorry you have to go through with having to build something, but maybe you're idea is better.
Well, it's, it's just, it's unavoidable, and there's nothing we can do, so we have to comply with the trucking companies.
You don't have any comments on the-
Okay. So if you have another comment, you need to now turn to Seeker, and it's an unlisted action. So that means you gotta go through the short environmental assessment form that the applicant, the applicants in here filled out, and then go through the part two, the impact assessment, decide whether there's a no impact, a small impact, or a moderate, a large impact. And then, based on your answers to those questions, you decide whether or not the construction of the building will result in any significant adverse environmental impacts or not.
And as we take a look at what we divided here in part one, and we look at part two, will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? And I'm looking at site and, um, things that are proposed, all in particular, do you see any problems with land use?
Well, given, given that the property is zoned general industrial, and this is an industrial use warehouse, then there's no conflict with zoning regulations or the adopted land use plan.
Which would extend right into, right across Orchard at that particular point, I mean to Xerox, yeah, in terms of-
Yes, that's also general industrial.
I would say that in light of that, there would be no small, or small impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
Well, that's, that's kind of a tough one, because right now, it's, it's a field, it's a field, it's vacant land, so nothing's happening there. So obviously, if you put up a shed on the property, it's gonna result in a change in use or intensity of land, but again, it's properly zoned and that, so.
There, Bill?
Yeah?
Or a small impact, small impact, we occurred to it, but I don't think anything is moderate or mild. Would the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? I do not believe that it would do so. It's an industrial area, but I think that it will be, a building that will be certainly not in, in any way carrying the characteristic of that.
Mayor Byers, they don't have the second, I don't know where that came from, but the rest of the board members don't have any part that you're looking at.
So, yeah, I would just-
Well, it goes, the question goes along with, if you look at number six on page two of the short form, where it says, "Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape?" And the applicant says yes, and I would tend to agree with that, you know, so that, then that goes along with question number three.
Just fly down.
And then, and then number four, where it talks about a critical environmental area, again, you go to number seven, "Is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it join a state listed critical environmental area?" It doesn't, so, so obviously, it can't have any impact on a critical environmental area, because it's not located within a critical environmental area. Then, number eight, number eight again talks about traffic, and the next question relates to traffic, so.
Uh, number four?
Number five, "Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, bike, team, or walkway?"
Not at all, I don't believe that, well, the only thing would be, it wouldn't impair it. The only thing you would have coming out is during the day, you might, I don't know how often you go in terms of taking what's in the warehouse and taking it to your wholesale district or something.
I have no idea, Mayor, how to answer that, um, it's not gonna be heavily used, no. We'll get probably four, four times a week in there, and probably visit the building twice a day with one or two vehicles.
It's a four, it's a four lane road there, so it's not, only have two lanes, so it won't that matter at all, no.
Well, the four lanes that, that go on from that point to the east may be changing in a couple of years, depending upon what happens with Xerox, so. Right now, it's still working. Uh, number six, proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? I don't believe so. Fast to incorporate, you know, the variable energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities. I don't believe that, uh, I don't believe that it will increase the use of energy, actually. It's not like it's an industrial application, it's more of a warehouse.
It'll be heated.
All right?
It will be heated.
It will be heated, sure, but I don't think-
Well, heating electric, um, we talked about putting some solar panels on at some points, I'm due to help with that.
So, that would mean incorporating reasonable, uh, available energy conservation renewable sources, so, I think that would be fine. Uh, proposed impact, um, existing public-private water supplies? I don't believe so, because you won't be really using water, it's not like you're growing anything in there.
No, it'll be-
There's gonna be one, one bathroom, I, I think you said the other night, right?
We're, we're putting in one bathroom at this point, but I don't, we're gonna leave it open for, if I have to add another bathroom, then I'll have the ability to, that's why we changed it to be, I'll be sanitary suite in the side of the building, so it's across the building here.
Well, certainly, even if you had two sinks and two toilets, that's not gonna overload, you know, the Nor County Water Authority for supply of water to the Village of Webster.
I don't, you know, greatly impact, I don't think so. Nor will it impact the wastewater treatment utilities, so.
Right.
Uh, compare the character or quality of important historic archaeological, uh, aesthetic resources. I don't believe so. I don't think that there's anything there, although, could be wrong, but I suspect that as it exists right now, there's, uh, impairing the quality of the site at all, so.
No, maybe it might, I'm certain.
No, I don't believe it. Will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, quality, uh, flora or fauna? Obviously, you're gonna be taking some of the property that's there, that's green space right now, I guess, and removing it, but I would say air quality, no groundwater, um, I don't think it'll have an effect, a change in, in that natural resource. Wetlands, you're providing for a couple of areas there, right, in terms of ponds?
Yeah.
And that.
Rain garden.
Rain garden. I don't know, that'll probably improve.
Well, I'm trying, the property is adjacent to a federal wetlands, but your property, this property doesn't, isn't incorporated in any of the map wetland?
No.
No, it's not. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? Having that proposed, looks like it is a retention pond, basically, that's there, or two of them.
Well, and they, they filed a stormwater, uh, prevention plan for, during the construction, that Aaron's he's your stormwater person for the village, so it's subject to his approval of that, and theoretically, if he thinks it's gonna cause an issue, he'll, he'll change the plan and address wherever it needs to be addressed, but, uh-
In terms of increase to the potential for, I'm not sure that it would do that necessarily for drainage problems, personally, I don't think.
Yeah.
Everything else, small may occur, but otherwise, I don't think. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, I don't believe so. In terms of creating a hazard for human health, you know, anybody disagree with that?
No.
And, all right? In part three, right then, we move to short form environmental assessment, from part three, determination of significance.
Right, so since you, since you determined that, that there are only gonna be either no or small impacts to the environment, then I think it would be appropriate to ask for a motion to, um, determine that, uh, that the project would not have any, uh-
Adverse environmental-
Any significant adverse environmental impacts. It's gotta be that by resolution, by motion.
Um, then I would, um, ask for a, uh, a motion indicating that the impact would be negligible or extremely small, in terms of, um, the environmental, um, I'll put, a motion. Okay, I'll hear it.
What do you think?
You just need a motion that the proposed action for the construction of this warehouse will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
I'll make that motion.
Excellent.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Motion.
Motion passed.
And so now you can go on to a motion to either approve or deny, or approve with conditions, the site plan that is before you. I would only suggest that if you're gonna approve it, you do it only on the, with the condition that they add the two parking spaces, one on the front and one on the back.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, hang on. And I would propose this resolution, site, uh, an original site plan review and approval for eleven Orchard Street, Webster, New York. Tax ID zero eight zero point zero six, one twenty point two two, to construct a warehouse, loading dock, and driveway parking, with the addition of two parking spaces totaling twenty-four. Uh, pursuant to G one zoning district, village code section one seventy-five twenty-four, property zone G one, general industrial. Is that fit, Doug?
Yes, except it's actually G I for general industrial, not G one, but, yeah, it's hard to tell with the, with the name's type of-
It needs to, uh-
Thank you. It does help.
I'm a lot, trust me, I mean, I'm licensed.
Well, it is hard to tell if it's an I or a one, so.
So, uh, motion is before the board.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, and I'm sorry for literally seeing all of it, but, I'm just saying, we, we know we're not today. We appreciate you, appreciate you.
So, Justin? Oh, the only thing, the only thing? The signature. He is, on the signature line, instead of the zoning board chairman, have you changed it to mayor?
L.
L?
L.
And, and the site plan itself, do you have the signatures? Instead of zoning board chairman, the top line, can you make it mayor?
Okay. After you do that, I'll have all the appropriate folks sign it in the audience. So we got, you can start it.
So we can get started immediately, or?
Just check with Aaron, the whatever permit-
Check with me, you gotta file for your actual permit, and he'll talk to me tomorrow.
Okay. Does that just like to get started on the problem that we got?
That'd be great.
Yep. Thank you for your time, I'm sure-
That's all in the process.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'll be in tomorrow morning.
Happy holidays.
You may enter tomorrow morning at the door.
I'll be in tomorrow morning at seven AM.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Bye.
Uh, I believe they have a copy of budget to actual, uh, which for store. The debt for your general information, as to where we are disposing in the year. Um, done with anything other than what we were discussing with the, uh, seeker and all of that for the site plan review? Anything for additional?
Um, well, only to explain why they were here in the first place. Is because on their New York Village Law, section seven dash seven twenty-five dash A, small A.
Jeez.
What?
How do you remember that?
Because I got it right from- It says, "Approval of site plans, the village board of trustees may, as part of a local law adapted pursuant to this order, to this article, authorize the planning board or such other administrative body that shall so designate or be to approve site plans." Well, if you go through the villages, the village code, including the zoning code, there is nothing in there about site plan approval. How that happened, I have no clue, you know, you would've thought years ago, there, that a local law could've been adopted, but it never was. So, the village board, since you can designate- So the village board, since you can designate the planning board or zoning board to do it, that means the village board has the inherent authority to approve site plans. But you don't want to do this anymore. So we're going to, you know, after the first of the year, I'll put together a local law, and it'll have all the requirements of what you need for site plan approval. Similar, it won't be as extensive. If you look at the towns, the towns is.
Yeah.
The towns is somewhat overkill. But like the village of Fairport, he has a more streamlined one that probably would suffice for the village. But we'll get that local law, so actually on the books, that gives the zoning board the authority to approve site plans. Because right now, they don't. Because the planning board never had the authority. If the planning board had the authority, then they would have gone to the zoning board, but it was never given to the planning board in the first place. And how they've slipped through the cracks over the years, I have no idea.
It was before my time.
We're not blaming you. It definitely was before your time.
So you've got to go back 30 years and get them all approved.
The village board does not have to go through the training that's required, which is, it could be expensive, so.
I agree.
But a lot of things like Brittany Woods and. Because those also involve a subdivision of land, dividing a big parcel into smaller parcels. There is debt fell under the subdivision ordinance, and there's a whole review process there. Also, townhouses are considered a controlled site use in the, and under the zoning ordinance, there is an approval process for controlled sites. But industrial stuff like warehouses isn't considered a controlled site, so it didn't fall into that either. So we have to sort of, we have to.
Yes, we do.
Correct that. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
So anyhow, so that's all I got. So there's, there's a, and I have a list in my office. There's probably five or six local laws that we got to tackle sooner rather than later.
All good?
I think we can add local laws. Or maybe we can add. They're probably, if there isn't something already there, right now, they're allowed.
Hanging over on a public roadway.
Whereas, that's not hanging over a public roadway. There's still room for another car on the roadway that's not hanging over a public roadway. I've checked it multiple times. Have a front yard?
Yes.
You can have a 50-foot trailer park in your front yard as long as it doesn't overhang the public roadway.
As it's registered, absolutely.
Even, I know the town code, the town doesn't allow it there. You got to have it in the side here.
And add to the list. In the, in the off-season, it has to be, it has to be the side here.
I'm called this off-season. I think in the town, it's got to be in the side here.
Is it a motor home?
Yes, it's a motor home, it's a credit home, it's a motor vehicle.
I don't believe that they are supposed to be extended in front of the, in front of the house.
Our code allows it.
Yes.
Been checked multiple, all the time. Well, maybe we could.
Something would have to look at. But there's, there's another thing. There's an issue on Main Street about trash being put out in the front days before the pickup. And if you look in the code, it allows trash to be placed at the curbside, but it doesn't have any limitations. It doesn't say for how long, for time, nothing. It just says you can put it at the curbside.
I was wondering how we would.
Yeah. Well, and that contradicts other parts of that same local.
So to tie it all in together, we're going to basically say no sooner than the night before.
Right.
Yeah, good.
It's a, it's a simple time change that we're going to add to it.
And maybe because residents do it, and you know, that's how we are still.
Right, but theoretically, you can leave your toter out there forever.
Oh, I know.
And there's nothing that.
Because there's nothing.
Because it says you can have curbside, you can leave your stuff at the curb.
And there are times in the village where it is left out for a day after pickup. For example, a pickup time Tuesday, it's still there on Wednesday, maybe taken in Thursday. Because there is nothing that says that you can leave it out there necessarily other than the fact that you're living in a neighborhood and neighborly, you would take it in.
Well, I think that should be correct.
Yes.
It should, why should it sit there empty the day after, or a day after it's already been picked up, the garbage is picked up? There's no reason for that. They should put it up to the side of their house.
So if they can't be considerate, we'll make it a law, to simply say.
So, so we need to.
I think we have a legislature, I suppose these days.
Well, the, yeah, the way things are, yeah.
Somebody's on vacation. That would be specific.
If they're on vacation, somebody had to put it out there.
Because you're on vacation. What, on the day before, I believe it's Sunday, it's a long day.
Yeah, I'd have somebody bring it here.
And you can make it specific to certain zones, certain areas. I don't know how that, we'll tackle that.
Never.
Good.
Among the months that.
It would give us a saving year.
Aaron, anything further?
Uh, nothing further. It's, I'm still going with my normal issues, country man or hassle. I don't have a part, my computer crashed, I got the computer installed today, so.
Is there a computer crash?
Yes, yes, so, so nothing other than. Got some good, good feedback on some violations that are taken care of. Everything's going well, busy, so.
Busy's good, though.
Yes, it is.
Helen? No? Okay, nothing from your court's office. Well, then I would mention that our next village board meeting will be January 13th, 2022. I could change that to 2021.
I messed that up, sorry. Don, Darryl would like to do it Zoom and this, because he might not be here. Is that something we can do?
Russell, what?
He wants to make sure we have, you could participate via Zoom as well, because he's not going to be, he'll be at work.
Well, I don't know if that, well, technically, the open meetings law says you can do it remotely, but the public has to be able to have access to wherever the remote person is, which probably isn't contemplated to be in.
Did they change that when it was, when you got to do it on Zoom?
Huh?
Did they change that when it got to be on Zoom?
Well, that's, when it's on, but the, the intent is for the entire meeting to be on Zoom. Not for, not to this hybrid, you know, some in person and some on Zoom.
I mean, that's fine.
I think it's either, it's either, it's either all or nothing, I think, because.
Well, you're all. If you're all on Zoom, then part of the public doesn't have access.
Oh, yes, she'd be loving that.
Unless they want to do all Zoom.
If it's on Zoom, the public does have access because the public can join the Zoom meeting.
Does the village furnish the equipment for them to join the Zoom?
There's no requirement that the village has to do that, nor any other municipality. But as long as they, they have access, you know, you go to a public library and get a computer. You don't have to give everybody a laptop. And again, we didn't write the law, the state law, the state did that. And that's what the state said, you can do remote meetings. It's gone through January 15, I think. And then the governor's probably going to extend it, but the legislature has to extend it because it's not even an executive order, they actually passed a law. That says that.
If it doesn't cause an undue problem, if it does, don't worry about it.
See, it just says, "A public body that uses video conferencing to conduct its meetings shall provide an opportunity for the public to attend, listen, and observe at any site at which a member participates." So that means they can, they can go to your place in Florida.
Welcome to Florida.
The meeting in Florida.
So, so I suppose you could do it that way as long as you have to put in the notice, Darryl's address in Florida, that he is going to be participating down there, and anyone's welcome to attend with him down there.
And it has to be advertised here as well as in Florida.
Yep.
I don't know how exactly. I don't know how I'll advertise in Florida, but.
We'll figure it out before.
Okay.
Or.
It might be just.
Or as long as you're having a quorum and.
If you have a quorum, that's right.
You know, so if you guys decide what you want to do.
Let's all go.
So I guess technically you can do it, but it's just, it's just doing their well, proper notice.
Okay.
Once the meeting is over, you have to leave.
And no refreshments will be served?
Yes, he will.
And make sure you have somebody take your garbages back in from home in Florida.
Parked a trailer at the end.
All right, well, I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Enjoy the time you have with family and friends and a wonderful Happy New Year as well. And move into 2022 New Year. There'll be a number of things going to be happening in the village, for sure. A lot of good things have happened this year. We had a great turnout for Christmas in the village. A great turnout that that was down at, at the park and the parade. Well, as all the people that came out for trick-or-treating in the village. That was great to have everybody coming out again, so. Did a great finish to, to the year. Been trying, been definitely a challenging year, different than any other year. Than last year, but hopefully this year will be new and will soon be somewhat normalized again. Keep moving forward. I say to everybody, Merry Christmas, God bless, have a wonderful time with your family and enjoy the season. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, carry. Night, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.